Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Meeting, Thursday, July 17th, 2025. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Misskman?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Present.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a very special thing we do, which is administering the oath of office to some new firefighters, chief. Welcome to everyone from the Fire Department here. It's great to see you all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The firefighter's oath is always a great event, which honors our community and ceremoniously celebrates the commitment of Marion firefighters to our community. It's an event that these firefighters and their peers and families will never forget. At this time, I ask that firefighter Sitter, firefighter Bane, and firefighter Schneider come forward to the dais. Our mission is to take pride and ownership in serving our community by protecting life and property through rapid response, community risk reduction, and emergency preparedness. We value service for the betterment of our community through professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. This mission and our values set the tone for what makes a Marion firefighter. We are here for Marion. Our mission is to serve our community. This evening, Matt Sitter, Michael Bane, and Zeb Schneider will take their oath, a commitment to service in joining the legacy of Team Marion. They are all new to our team, having joined in the last year. Their preparation and success, as they would tell you, has not been just on their own. Their families, mentors, and fellow firefighters have prepared them for this career of service, and we are all thankful for their commitment to their success. At this time, I ask that each of the firefighters' designees come forward and pin them with their firefighter badge. Thank you. Matt, real quickly, did you want to introduce?
Yeah, my wife, Lindsey Sitter.
Great, thanks, Lindsey. Michael?
My wife, Hillary. My daughter, Quinn.
Deb?
My wife, Leah.
Great. Well, thank you all. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, Mayor Nick. From left to right, we have firefighter Sitter, firefighter Bane, and firefighter Schneider. They are ready to take their oath, sir.
I am Matthew Sitter.
I am Matthew Sitter.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion.
And the City of Marion.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
And that I will serve the City of Marion.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And in adherence.
Okay, Michael Vane. And after me, I'm Michael Vane.
I'm Michael Sitter.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of Marion.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of Marion. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the ordinances of the City of Marion. And the ordinances of the City of Marion.
And that I will serve the City of Marion.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department. And its fire department.
With the best of my ability. With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And in adherence to the fire service. Congratulations.
Okay, Zeb. First your hand. Good afternoon.
I am Tevin Schneider.
Hi, is that Tevin Schneider?
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
And I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Let's give them another round of applause.
Very cool.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again to all of you and to all the members of the Fire Department who are here. You're part of a very proud tradition of 151-year legacy in our Fire Department. So we appreciate all you do and thank you for being part of Team Marion. Next item is a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone's here to address council on a topic that is part of a public hearing, there will be time to address the City Council at that time. And then there will also be another public comment section at the end of the meeting for all other comments. I'd like to review the rules of procedure before we begin the public comment period. There are yellow cards at the end of the table. Please complete that card if you wish to speak and hand it to the city clerk. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have handouts, submit them to the clerk for distribution to the council. Once you're called forward, please step up to the podium, speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. You're encouraged to state your name, address, and any group affiliation. Anyone wishing to speak will be provided a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. Please don't engage in speech or conduct that is imminently threatening to any person, which incites violence or which is obscene. Please keep the comments relevant to the topic at hand and do not make any disparaging remarks towards any individual. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with other people's ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in any disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone's cooperation with these guidelines. The public comment period is now open. If anyone's here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we will close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, sorry, we did receive one comment in advance of the meeting.
Go ahead.
From John Beard. It's in relation to Resolution 32473 regarding the one-year validity extension of the Rookwood Estates East Edition. He commented on the tall grass weeds maintained. It appears that this is for Rookwood Estates addition, which is west of the preliminary plat in question. And then he had concerns that the builders won't want the lots.
That the builders won't?
Won't want the lots.
The lots?
Mm-hmm.
In the new addition?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E2, Resolutions 32459 through 32473.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E2, Resolutions 32459 through 32473. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Item D1, Resolution 32474.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the mayor's abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-21, repealing various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 12, Article 11 regarding the Public Works Board, and Section 50-2E regarding mayor appointments, and Section 50-34B2 regarding city manager appointments and supervision of other personnel. Final consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-21. Any discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 25-21, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding C-Mar Trail Phase 5 project. We have a presentation from the city engineer.
Yes, honor. So this is something to celebrate. This is the last segment of C-Mar. So this is basically south of Menards, south of 100, down to Mount Calvary Cemetery. It has a late start date of June 1st, 2026. The low bid was PCI. So just because it says a late start of June 1st, 2026, does not mean they're going to wait till that date. So once we get all the contracts signed, depending on when they can get their pedestrian bridges in, they may want to start early. There is free winter work during this project, so they can work, depending on how the conditions are out there. There are 95 working days once April commences, and liquidated damage is an amount of $1,200 per day. So again, just kind of overall, you can see in the green picture. So we're talking about next to Menards from Grand Avenue all the way to the Mount Calvary Cemetery. There is a very small section down here that Cedar Rapids will have to have their own crews go and pour just because it's close to the ditch that we're filling in, in that area. We got several bids for this project. It did bid to the DOT. That bid should be in your packet. But really good bid prices. That has to do too with the range that they gave them for the time. This is a project, we will have a groundbreaking and a ribbon cutting and probably some other celebrations when I finish this as a frequent trail user myself. So we are recommending proceeding with this contract and project. And I'll open up to the public and then I can answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if we received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not, other than excitement for it to be done.
A lot of people are excited about it being done. I'm asked about it all the time. When is the C-Mar Trail going to be finished? So now we can give them a timeline. So, very good. With that, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to, no, I guess, yeah, proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the C-Mar Trail. This will be Phase 5 project as follows. This will be Resolutions 32475 through 32476.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the C-Mar Trail Phase 5 project, which includes the resolutions 32475 through 32476. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the C-Mar Trail Phase 5 project, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the 2025 crack ceiling project.
Yeah, so we'll have a quick presentation on this. So because we posted the public hearing, we still have to have it. Bids were due July 8th. We actually received no bids for this project. We did have a meeting with the contractors that were interested in the project to find out why didn't you bid? And that's what we talked about a little bit on Tuesday. So we're reformulating how the project is put together so we can rebid it, hopefully get some bidders doing it a different way. But this is for our major corridors like Business 151 that has a lot of traffic. So changing the way that we're doing it.
Okay. So the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council, please come forward, either in favor or in opposition. But we don't have anything, right? So we just, I don't know what people would be commenting on. Is anyone here to address council on this measure? Okay. So I'm assuming we don't have any comments outside the meeting?
Correct. Then we can close it because we'll reset a new public hearing for the next set.
We do need to close this hearing?
Yep.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing and proceed to the next one, which is a public hearing regarding rezoning of property from SR2 to SR3, which is suburban medium-density single-family residential to suburban medium-density single-family residential for property located east of Lukor Road, north of Artesian Road. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So the applicant is requesting to rezone at the subject property. It's located just north of Artesian Road and east of Lukor Road from SR2 suburban and medium-density single-family residential to SR3 suburban medium-density single-family residential. So looking at our future land use map of Marion 2045, this area is designated as low intensity. When it comes to low intensity, the kind of intent of that land use designation is single-unit dwellings, density between two to six dwellings per acre, gradual change in intensity. So in some areas, you might have more of that closer to the two side of the density, and then working towards that six kind of units an acre is what can be seen for that gradual change in intensity. So this request is for single detached homes, which is provided for within the land use designation at 2.8 dwellings per acre. So that does fit within that two to six range with varying lot sizes. And then it does add some gradual change in intensity from those existing houses to the south here. They're sitting at about a density of 2.13. So it does offer us like gradual increase in density as you move north towards that medium intensity just on the other side of this subject property. So when it comes to the zoning, again, it's currently zoned SR2, moving to the SR3 for this final phase of the Champions Estates Edition. We are just talking about that northern kind of row of homes on the outer edge of the final addition. As you can see, that there are some more intense zoning districts nearby. So across Lukor, there's the SR4. And then that PUD as well on the west side of Lukor Road, they're attached units. So the density is a little more than what is being requested with this SR3 district. The main two differences between the SR2 district and the SR3 district is the minimum lot size or acreage. So we're looking at 8,000 square feet in the SR2 district versus 6,000 square feet in the SR3 district. So difference of 2,000 square feet. And then the minimum lot width can be 60 feet wide versus 70 feet in the current zoning district. All other bulk regulations are the same between the two zoning districts. Front yards, side yards, maximum height of the dwellings, they all match. So I did insert a slide of the proposed preliminary plat just to kind of show what that looks like. So with this request, they are able to increase the number by six lots by going to the SR3 zoning. So three would be on the west side of the sub-street, and three would be on the east side of that sub-street for that additional six lots that can occur with this rezoning request. The rest of this preliminary plat, we will discuss in the future a couple of meetings down the road here. But as you can see, that these lots along the north here, they're averaging about 64 feet wide, so not at that 60-foot minimum, but they are below that 70-foot of the SR2 district. And then those on the corner lots here, as I was stating on Tuesday, up against the right-of-way, they are a little more narrow at the road. But once they hit that 25-foot front yard setback, they're over, they're about that 64-foot or so lot width as well, which is what we look at for meeting that lot minimum width, especially on a curve like that. So with this, we did receive some public comments. We had two phone calls. Once they were kind of told about what the project entailed, they seemed to find that they were kind of indifferent. We had three that emailed in in opposition to it. And then we had the applicant provide an email in favor of his request. So the ones in opposition, again, and I'll go back to the preliminary plat here. So one would be the increase in traffic. And why is there not another connection onto Lukor Road? So with that, this being a major arterial on Lukor, this does match that 2004 approved preliminary plat. The road network is not changing with what's being proposed here. And with that major arterial, we like to limit the amount of connection points. It would be very hard to, distance-wise, get another road to meet SUDAS standards in there. So this is matching what is currently approved. Again, with this rezoning, they're able to add six more lots to this section of the preliminary plat. Otherwise, concerns were around drainage. So this is that drainage easement in those northern properties on that northeast side there, where that current water channel is located. It all flows down through that established channel into Indian Creek, something that the engineering department's already reviewed. Other comments were character based off of size of lots. Some of the lots, some of the houses on the lots in the existing development is a part of the applicant's email in favor of his request, pointed out that some of those existing homes could be placed on the homes that are being proposed within this area. He is striving to have three-stall garages as a builder and developer. That is what's popular. They would all fit a three-stall garage. So those were some of those comments, all within the packet that you had received from those in opposition of the request. Royce, that's what I have, so.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing, at this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, either in favor or opposition, please come forward. Okay, aside from the three, four, four comments that Nicole mentioned, are there other comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
We have not received any additional.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and we'll proceed to the consideration of the measure.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-22, approving the request to rezone property from SR2 suburban medium-density single-family residential to SR3 suburban medium-density single-family residential for property located east of Lukor Road and north of Artesian Road, Marion, Iowa. This is from Craig J. Tobin, and this is the initial consideration.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-22. Discussion? Questions for staff?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go with Grant first and then Sarah?
Okay. Yeah, can we go back to the presentation slide that just shows, the one that showed the density or the intensity of use? I think it was one of the earlier slides.
Yeah.
Maybe one more. There, that, perfect. So Nicole, you gave us the specification for low intensity number of lots per acre. Was that 2.1 lots per acre?
The 2.13 is what the intensity is of the existing.
Okay, all right.
Area to the south.
And for the area in question now, what would be the intensity for that area?
2.8.
So let's make believe that to the north then, in the medium-intensity area, there was development going on. What would that, what would that value be?
That range can be anywhere from six to 11 units an acre.
Okay. All right. What I was, what I was trying to get to is a quantification of the buffering feature of this particular proposal. So thank you, that helps that, thanks.
Councilmember Menzer?
Yeah, and sorry, I was not here Tuesday. So if this was covered, my apologies that we get to cover it again. Is, first question is, does this extend sidewalks then up? I'm thinking of the Future Plan Park that we're looking at up to the north there potentially. And one of the conversations we keep having with it, we were having thoughts about it was, there's really not a lot of sidewalk access to that. So will there be sidewalks on the side, in the backyards of folks then?
So there will be sidewalk extended along Lukor Road that will be brought forward and more presented. So you didn't miss anything. It will be presented more during the preliminary plat aspect, but it does have a sidewalk that will continue north and end at the northern property line.
Okay. And then I feel like we're jamming things into an open space when we have a lot of open space. That's the only part. And I, this is really fresh for me because I was just out in this neighborhood last week because there was a conflict between a neighbor shooting off fireworks in their backyard that was landing in the front yard of the people they backed up to. And those lots are not, and I'm talking on the south side of Artesian. They are not deep lots. I mean, it's, and I know some people may want that. But I, I don't want, I don't know if anybody remembers back to the conversations. Okay, I'm going to back this up. When we talk about walkability in communities and neighborhoods, a lot of the studies we did back in did back in the Blue Zones days talked about how people want to walk where they see front doors and front porches and and activity in the front. And we've, we have this in my neighborhood too. It's like, we need to get back to more front porch sitting kind of a thing. So people want to see that. They don't like to walk by where the garage is sticking out and you don't know what's around the corner. People aren't as comfortable. And I feel like we're just continuing to build the same thing over and over and now making it really tight. And I'm just curious why we have, why we need to put six more lots in this space? Like what are we? That's kind of my one question. And it relates to the second part of this, which is, how much of the community, in the community, do we have SR three? Like what, do we have a large percentage of SR three zoned homes and neighborhoods? I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I didn't give you a heads up on this, so it's okay that it's like not out there in front of you. I'm tossing it out there for kind of follow up, I guess. How many? It would be interesting to know as we look at, after the comp plan, but how many we're dealing with SR threes, SR twos? Because it seems like we're doing this a lot. Maybe we're not, maybe, maybe, maybe we're not. I would just be curious to know the percentages of what we have here and what we have planned coming, because it's going to get even tighter, apparently. I wasn't aware of that, even going north of that. And I don't know why we have to jam a whole bunch of things in a space where we have a whole bunch of green space and what the, what the thinking was behind of it, I guess. And maybe if that comes forward, I would understand a little more. But it is, those lots are tight, tight, tight. And we're already seeing neighborhood conflicts and we've got just the one road. And I think it's the same developer, from what I can tell off the maps. So that is my comment, I guess, and for follow up question type of.
Yeah, so this is the final addition within that development. It is a new developer, though. He did not build out the one through four additions. He did purchase the land to do the final fifth addition. As far as other areas, zoned SR three, so just kind of pulled up the zoning map quick. The area around like Magowan, kind of south of the Indian Creek Country Club, that area is more SR three. And then we've got the area just south of Boulder, Boulder Peak School that where Skogman and Robson are both building. We've got some SR three in that area. And then we've got some kind of around Oh, Marion High School, kind of on all sides of it. In this area, we don't have a ton northern. We do have pockets of more of the SR four, which allows for the two family residential. As far as lot depths go, when looking at the approved two thousand four preliminary plat, I mean, they could just take what's approved and kind of finish it out according to those plans. The lots along this northern portion were averaging, I think it was about, close to about a hundred and thirty feet in depth. Some of them are closer to that one twenty three mark that are existing, and then the ones closer to the Artesian. But the ones that are a part of this rezoning request, a lot of them are hitting close to one hundred and thirty feet in depth.
And once we approve the size of the lot, if this would, you know, go to an SR three, we don't have any besides meeting building standards, we don't know what they would look, what they're going to look like. I think about the different homes that have, you know, more like garage in the back, or we've done some of that, which is kind of nice to see. I also think of, and I know it's not that tight of a lot, but like the Ankeny neighborhood that they built kind of by the aquatic center and across from their new, the commercial district that's exploding, where the house is in the front, the garage is in the back. And you, I mean, it would be just nice to see some, I know it doesn't work here, but as we're looking forward, it would be really nice to see some different, I guess, there's always said, see some differences so that down the road here, we don't see the same house over and over and over and over again in every neighborhood.
Your honor?
Packed in, so that's all.
Sorry, once councilmember Menzur's completed, I just wanted to ask Nicole if she could make a clarification that some of these concerns would potentially be addressed when a new plat would be submitted. Is that correct, that that will be back here? And that the original plat that's submitted now would be based on the old zoning standards or the current zoning standards?
Correct. So the proposed plat, the proposed plat is based off of the proposed zoning tonight and will come back at the third reading of the rezoning request.
So there will be an opportunity potentially for the developer to be here and answer some of these questions?
He, and he is in the audience too, so.
And just one more thing, just Sarah, when you were talking about the different styles of housing and not having the same type of housing all the, you know, row housing kind of thought image, right? I know when we were going through the comp plan, Mayor Nick, you had also had mentioned something about the size of the lots and the variation of the lots and having different styles of housing as well.
Because our lot sizes are not encouraging a variety of housing types. And that's a big concern for me because we are ending up with streets of houses that are all the same and the house is completely behind the garages and all you see is garage doors.
Yep.
We have to encourage variety. Otherwise, I think, you know, looking back on it twenty years from now, I don't think we're going to really be happy with what we've built.
So, so in that, we have noted that. So as we're working through some of the other, the things that have came out of the comp plan discussion with the sign code and landscaping will also be, we have also noted, jotted that down too. So in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing something back to you just to have more open conversation about that. And how would we go about that if that is an option for us to do that?
Okay, any more comments, Steve?
Yeah, Nicole, can you go one more slide forward? Where it shows the low density, medium density slide? Right there. Okay, so I'm a little confused here then, because we read this as, this is being changed from SR two to SR three, but calling it medium density. But everything is showing there as low intensity. And above it is medium intensity. What am I missing here?
So that would be the difference between the future land use map designations and how our zoning districts are named.
Okay. So if we could look at this map here, future land use map, and above it is medium intensity, what kind of housing or units would we expect to have above this line that we're talking about here?
So we could see anywhere from single family attached or detached townhomes, duplexes, multi unit buildings, even potentially neighborhood commercial would be allowed within that future land use designation. So based off of that, we would zone according to a concept that's submitted.
Okay, so everything above this is going to become even more, more dense, more compact.
Correct.
So it's, so potentially this, this line is a transition into that denser medium intensity line on the north side of this.
Correct.
All right. I'm assuming, is he doing this, I'm assuming he's doing it mainly because, well, obviously he's doing it for money. He's going to sell more lots for more money. I mean, that's the bottom line to this whole thing, right?
I mean,
I mean, what other reason would he be doing?
Is what kind of they're looking to do, but it also is to provide that kind of transition. One thing I kind of forgot to mention was the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they reviewed this, they did commend the developer for only rezoning a port, that northern portion that didn't back up to existing residential homes versus rezoning that entire area to SR three, only doing, again, that northern line that doesn't back up to those existing homes or on Artesian.
So does he want more land to the east of this? Or what, what other land does he own that he could have talked about rezoning?
Terrell, can you go to two slides, two or three slides? Two more, one more. So in kind of that dark blue outline is the rest of the build out for this fifth addition.
Right.
So that area, I mean, he could have requested that entire area to go to SR three.
I thought that's what we're doing.
Dark blue requests that.
Not the light blue. Everything's south, the whole line of houses.
So this outline is the rezoning request.
Right.
The rest of the plat that will come forward in the future follows this dark blue line here.
Oh, I see.
Then it comes down and then there's one lot off to the side here.
So he's leaving the rest of that as SR two?
Correct.
Okay, I follow you. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Menzur has.
One more question. I'm related to this. How is going forward as we keep moving lots up and, you know, development up? Is can Lucor, is Lucor Road and the intersections for this all prepared to handle more traffic? I guess as we're coming in here, that's a stop sign onto that's if you're, it's a stop sign onto or coming into where we would have tower terrace and how that's all going to work. So can we?
It's a major arterial, but I'll let our public works director field the rest of that.
Yeah, so that's, again, as part of the comp plan, we adopted a major streets plan. So that we know where those collectors, major arterials, minor arterials all are. So whether it's a roundabout, a signalized intersection, or a stop control, we'll look at that as we go. And again, it may change. So it might start as a two way stop and then as a four way as traffic impact, eventually maybe a signal or a roundabout. So you typically kind of stage it.
As we continue to grow
Yep.
North that way. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Any more questions for staff?
Yes, go ahead. So I, maybe Sarah mentioned this. Is it, at a future consideration, is it appropriate to have the developer actually prepared to answer some additional questions? And obviously, hearing this dialogue, you know, I don't know if there's anything that will linger, but it's, this is important. I mean, it is an important consideration as we move through this. So.
Yeah, we always tell our applicants that they should either be there as an applicant or have a representative present to answer questions of counsel that staff is unable to answer on their behalf.
And this is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I personally, I'm not prepared to vote yes today. There's two more votes and I, you know, I, I just want to think about it some more. But I do want us to really be cognizant of this, I mean, even ten feet is, is, is significant. I just think our lot sizes are not, are not encouraging variety in housing types. I know even with my own lot, which is, you know, I mean, it really limited to what we could do, but there weren't any other lots in the city that would accommodate what we wanted to do. It's, I think it's important to, even, even if the zoning code allows it, or, you know, I think it's important to have those conversations with developers and to try to encourage variety, which the lot size really determines the width. It's not the, it's not the length, the depth. It's the width of the frontage that really limits and determines the variety of houses. If you drive around the community, you see a lot of neighborhoods where it's just garage doors is all you see. Okay, so we'll, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty five dash twenty two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
No. So we have two noes. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding amendments to chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to sign regulations.
So we have Charlie Cowell here with RDG to go over our sign regulation amendments.
Thank you, Nicole. Hey, council. Good to see you again. We're getting to our last phase of the series of what we call design standard updates for the zoning code amendments. Before you tonight is updates to the entire sign regulation portion of the zoning ordinance. This is a little bit separate from design standards because it's also addressing just a total reorganization of the sign code for better clarity, to make sure we're covering all the definitions we need to, and also to make sure we're filling some gaps that we're missing as far as just being able to regulate different types of signage. So I'll overview some of what those major changes are. This is the initial consideration and the future considerations would be off of seventh and twenty first, assuming things go through without any tabling. So going way back to the beginning, when we talked in the comp plan and the design standard code updates, there was some conversation about signage, not a lot, but pretty typical stuff about we want to make sure that we don't create sign clutter, have some flexibility for, for creativity and make clear decision making as important features. So four major items, other than a bunch of grammatical and, and language updates that you, you see in the text, content neutrality in the code language. So you'll see now the entire code. You should not have to read the sign to be able to regulate it. That change was made throughout the code and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a few slides. There were some items that just frankly, just didn't have regulations attached to them. A sign type was listed, but there was not any regulations that regulated the size and tie and location. So we filled those gaps in. A few sign types that we got more, did make some more substantial changes on versus how you regulate them today, and I'll talk about those. And then reorganization, which I already mentioned. So the content neutrality is based on some Supreme Court rulings several years ago. So basically what that means is these, these, all these definitions you see here, you'd have to, in your current code, read these signs to be able to regulate them. So we've consolidated a lot of the language and signs to make it easier to enforce without having to read the signage. So for example, gas station price sign is consolidated under electronic message center signage. Identification signs are kind of split up. Things like political signs, real estate signs, residential signs are now all clumped together under temporary signage. So now the umbrella of temporary signage covers a lot of different things and can mean a lot of different things depending on what you're wanting to put up temporarily on your, on your property. But it's all clumped together as one definition. Similarly, with informational signs and, and construction signs. So a lot of this is regular, be regulated the same, they're just called different things. There are a number of things that you see added in, into the sign code now as we try to fill in all the gaps of, of regulations. So we add some clarity on how to measure the height and projection and setbacks of, of signs, which is just for easier implementation and enforcement. Clarified, again, I mentioned temporary signs, what, what qualifies as a temporary sign. And then these items here in the bullet point list or the bottom bullet point list were all items that were in some way, shape or form listed, listed in your current code, but maybe didn't have all the regulations necessary to be able to shoot and force them in a certain way, whether that was, there was a size missing, there was a location thing missing or, or something else. So we filled in all those gaps for, for these types of signs. We also clarified some things on how signs are allowed in residential districts, particularly related to residential districts that allow multifamily or community uses. These are uses that, that are just probably just fine having signage, in fact, might need it for certain instances. You can think apartment complex that might have the name of it on, on the front of it or for certain instances. You can think apartment complex that might have the name of it on, on the front of it or places of worship that might need a sign out front for, for different reasons. So we clarified and made sure that there was size requirements for all of those situations. And then the, the requirements on things like electronic message centers obviously have a different impact in a residential zone than, than a commercial zone. Those are still electronic message centers, still wouldn't be allowed in the central corridor districts as they are not today. That was kept forward through, through these regulations. Oning canopy signs would be allowed in certain instances where they're, say, on a building entrance or things like that. Wall signs to a limited extent, and then projecting signs, which are the signs that would be on a wall that stick out a little bit, like blade signs or things like that, would be permitted in certain districts, particularly for multifamily buildings. One change, oh, I shouldn't say one, but one of a couple more substantial changes to the actual regulations themselves is this update does propose reducing the size of or clarifying the definition of how electronic message centers can be permitted. So on the left-hand side is how they're enforced today. So basically, it's if you have a sign of an equal amount of that sign face that's not electric can be electric. So fifty fifty split of what can be an electronic message center, which you see kind of the ratio of what that looks like on the left. Under this proposal, that would be brought down to fifty percent of the non-electric sign face. So if you have a seventy-five square foot sign, fifty square feet of that could be a non-electric portion and then twenty-five square feet. So fifty percent of fifty square feet could be the electronic message center. So this kind of illustrates the ratio of what that looks like in this context. So that would be a change from how you currently allow electronic message centers today. And keep in mind, they're not allowed, they're still not allowed in residential districts or, or the central corridor districts where this is mainly for your commercial and industrial districts. Another change that's different than how you do things today is how monument and joint identification signs are are allowed as far as their height is concerned. Today, you allow a little bit of variation in the maximum height of these signs based on how big the lot is. So in the example here, if it's, the lot is less than five acres, they can be up to twelve feet tall. If it's greater than five acres, then it can jump up to fifteen feet. This update makes, makes that size differentiation based on the setback of the sign because that really is what matters more than the size of the lot. It's how you visualize the sign from the street, regardless of how big the lot is. So if you're, if the sign monument sign is within twenty feet setback, it has an eight-foot tall height maximum. If it's, if it's more than twenty feet back, then it can go up to fifteen feet. So a little, because you'd be further away from the street, you may need a bigger sign for visibility if you're setback more. So it's a little give or take if you're setback a little more. And then lastly, one of the more regulatory changes relate to box signs, which are kind of those, I don't even know how to describe, but they're, they're a box sign, sticks out from the, the building. It's attached to the building. They could be illuminated in certain instances. Today, you allow them to continue and addition of new box signs to existing box signs. The proposed code would no longer allow box signs. It would allow in addition to an existing sign, but it would have to be kind of a flat panel sign that, that is added rather than a expansion of the amount of box signs, which are usually, like I said, internally illuminated. So those are kind of three more, more regulatory substantial changes. Otherwise, it, it does look a lot different. A lot of these, these tables you don't have today. So lists out the permitted uses in a table and then lists out the regulations in a series of various tables as well, which currently your code is just bullet points and it goes down and down and down. So so that happy to answering questions you had as you look through it, the planning zoning commission did recommend approval of, of the sign code, so.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Anyone who's here to address council on this measure, please come forward. We received comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
We have not either.
Thank you. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing. Proceed to the consideration of the, of the ordinance.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, amending chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to sign regulations in the city of Marion. Initial consideration.
Second.
I moved in seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three. Discussion. Yes.
Charlie. So what is the rationale or consideration on why these changes are being made? Is it that this is kind of the new norm? This is a, a, most cities are following these patterns? I mean, when you, when we're changing from A to B, what's the general rationale on why we're changing, making those changes?
I would say there's probably two or three reasons. One is the content neutrality is, is something while we, we have in a lot of states still exist under codes that, that regulate by content, that whatever year it was, a Supreme Court case does create some challenges that could be brought up in the future if someone were to challenge your code. So one is just to address those, those issues with the legality of content regulation. The second is just, is going back to the design standards, the corridors, wanting to create attractive entryways into town. And so taking a close look at the standards and making sure we're meeting those intense electronic message centers, for example, came up as something we want to, we want to be careful about allowing too much of. And so that was, that was part, part two of some of the changes. And then part three was just making it easier to use tables and making sure we're using language that is how we, how signs are used today versus twenty years ago.
So let's say I have, and this is before Nicole, so let's say I have a sign today under the old standards and size and it gets damaged in a storm. Now, can I replace it as it was or am I now under the new sign regulations?
We would look at the percentage damaged in the cost based off of our non-conformity.
Okay.
Code section.
Non-conformity use standard?
Yep. And then based off of that, we would determine if it would have to be brought up to new standards or if it would be allowed to be repaired. So in with the derachio, a lot of billboards in town were damaged beyond the percentage allowed to be repaired. So they, they weren't allowed to go back up and they had to be removed. So it really depends on that percentage of damage.
Okay, nice. Thank you. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, what, so what is that percentage of damage, that threshold?
Oh, I believe it's sixty percent.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good to see you, Charlie. Question with, and this is really probably more on the electronic messaging signage in the residential. And I see the need and I know schools, for example, often use them. What's the, is there a regulation on when those? I think about, it's, it's almost sounds counterproductive to have, allow them in neighborhoods where you have called light pollution or you'd have a neighbor close by that could have that, you know, scene from their home. So is there a complaint area for this or how do we handle? If one of these goes in in a neighborhood and they're like, that is, that light is coming right in. Are they only allowed during certain hours? Do they have to shut off at certain times in residential versus otherwise? And then how does somebody?
Yeah.
Modify?
Yeah, a couple follow-ups and then I'm sure Nicole has some too is so they would only be allowed as monument signs. They wouldn't be allowed as building signs in the MR, multi-residential districts. They wouldn't never be, they would never be allowed in like an SR or TR district. They would be allowed potentially in an MR district as a monument sign and then also a public, in the public institutional district, which is your schools and, and such. As far as the size limitations, they, they will be limited in size versus a commercial district. They'd have to be, I'm trying to find the, the right number here, but they would be limited in that, that aspect. As far as the illumination standards, we didn't change really any of the illumination standards as they are today. So they would be subject to glare on other properties that wouldn't be, that would have to be prohibited or shielded, excuse me, internally or light directed at it instead of internally lit outward. And then, yeah, complaint driven, then that would be one way to go out and check to make sure they're meeting those illumination standards. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Are we ready to vote? All of them favor of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public forum, which is a time for comments for the members of the public on any topic. Anyone here to address council, please come forward. Hello. Have you completed the card, sir? Have you completed the card?
Somebody's got it.
You do have it. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
My name is Laurie Smith. I'm a resident of Marion. And I'm here to, my presentation is going to be because I oppose the bond referendum for the new aquatics park that's proposed on Thirty First Street. Currently in Cedar Rapids and Marion, I counted them up, there's sixty-nine pickleball courts. And my question is, is why we need twelve more? That's one pickleball court for every two thousand people approximately in the Cedar Rapids and Marion area. And I just feel that we don't need another twelve more. So, and of what I've been talking to some of the pickleball managers in the city and their courts are right now underutilized. So with that, that's my reason for that. The other thing is the Marion pool. I got, and what prompted this was I got the survey in the mail that, you know, one should fill out, so I did. And the reason they stated that the, for the pool was that the repairs needed to be done, the proximity to the neighbors and the parking was not adequate. Also, which age was thirty-eight years. And also went back and looked at the other pools in Cedar Rapids, which there are six. The Ellis Park is eighty-four years old, Beaver sixty-nine, Jones sixty-five, Norridge sixty-four, Bender fifty-seven, Cherry fifty-one. We got the newest pool in the city. Yet those pools are all up and running. They're maintained. Most of them are fairly nice. And I'm wondering why, what's wrong with the picture that we can't maintain our pool like Cedar Rapids is? Why we have to have a new aquatic center rather than rebuilding the old pool, which I'm sure would be quite a bit of cost savings over the fifty million. The new park really is a project that is going to be more for show than for value, as far as I'm concerned. I feel that it'll be underutilized the same way as the railcar setting up the edge of town now is. And the bike trails that are going up that, you know, you see, maybe you see somebody crossing the street most of the time on a bike trail. Ninety percent of the time, you don't see anybody on the bike trail. So I think it's, they're very underutilized. I'm also afraid that the new skating rink will be the same way. You'll see half a dozen people on it, maybe a dozen when it first goes up. After a year or two, you'd be lucky to see anybody out there at all. I think this project has a total disregard for the size of the community and the public opinion. I have not, not run into anybody that's really for this project. And the cost is just astronomical. There is now, I did some checking on this too. There's not a single city in Iowa, the size of Marion, that has an aquatics park or either public or private. Doesn't make any difference which one does. No, there's no city of forty-three thousand that has an aquatics park. And I think that Marion could do a lot more with fifty million dollars to spend on this project. There's sidewalks that need to be put in along busy streets that aren't there. They could rebuild the current swimming pool. They could provide more affordable housing. Right now, affordable housing is supposed to be twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. I don't think twelve to fifteen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom is affordable housing. To me, that's high priced. They could do more to support existing small businesses, not just the ones downtown. Because I used to be a small business owner and I wasn't downtown. We got little or no support at all. And I think there needs to be, develop our actual long-term
One minute remaining.
That needs to be, that would meet the needs of the vast majority of the residents of this city rather than just a few. There was a report that came out today. The ranks now, Iowa's now ranked the seventh lowest state in the union of having an average, they got the lowest, seventh lowest wage in, on all of the United States. To me, that's really pretty bad. I think that this city should work more on things like that. Myself, I have two properties in Marion. And this is going to raise my taxes between five and six hundred dollars. I can go to Waterloo to waterpark there for a hundred and twenty dollars and I can go all year long and it don't cost me six hundred dollars. I don't see also that this is a big, that raising property taxes is a big attraction to future residents. Now, you see a lot of course, construction going on and I had, too bad I didn't put in comments for this other one. I would have put in.
Your time is up.
Is it up ready?
Yep.
Okay, well, sorry about that. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here to address council? Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we will close the public forum, proceed to council comments. We'll start on this end with council member Sternad.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got just a couple things here. This year, March twenty twenty-five, we're going to have obviously another election coming up here. It's amazing how time goes by. Ten years ago, I had an individual, a friend come up to me and, and make a comment that we had a vacancy in our council and they thought I should take a run at that. And so here we are ten years later. The, the reason I bring this up this evening is because next month, the end, almost four weeks to the day here, we will have candidacy forms that'll be turned in for those that will be seeking an election for all of the elected officials. So the, the purpose tonight is for me to announce that I will not be seeking a reelection. And I just want to let everybody know, I've been very grateful for the time served so far. So my apologies for that. That was a big decision for me to make, but I needed to get that out in the public. On a happier note, next week is Ragby. So to all those that are partaking in Ragby, safe travels. I will be a support driver and my wife will be riding it. So we will be headed to Orange City on Saturday morning. So safe travels to all those that are going to be out on Ragby next week. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Sir.
Yes, I do. Because it's summer. We've got things going on. All right, so just the list. Sunrise Yoga continues this month, July nineteenth. And then again, on July twenty-sixth, hope to see everybody out there. We've had some great turnouts, even with a very soggy last Saturday. We still had well over fifty people there. So that was awesome. Um July tw- Wednesday, July twenty-third is the Down Dogs in Uptown at six o'clock. We'll hope to see everybody in the Plaza. That's another been another fun event and with the shade, it's really nice um even on these hot days. Then uh just kind of a shout out to Seth's team um and Bill, but I know he's out right now. Uh we've been, this is on the the hat of Be Well Marion, um the Y. We've been having some meetings with the Marion Library and Lynn County Extension about additional programming and opportunities we could be offering the community um through the library and with some of the things that Lynn County Extension has related to um kids programming and adult cooking classes and other fun um fun ways to move forward in this coming year. So look for that. We're excited to see it and it's it's been a fun partnership. Also Seth, I don't know if you're gonna bring this up, but we have the art installation of the art project that in the Plaza. Um the install on that is scheduled in by the end of the month. I think there'll be more to come on that, but we're excited to see there's been a small committee working on that one.
I think it's in August.
Is it August? First part of August, first week of August?
Twenty-eight.
End of August.
Twenty-eight.
Sorry, I'm into July. Um and then finally, um we were talking about that. I know it's only July. Um finally, this is a big one. July thirty-first, because we won't meet again is a fun one. Lynn County Urban Egg Field Day. It's part with our master gardeners. Now our city staff will be there. It's an opportunity to promote our urban egg policies that we have in Marion that we worked a lot on during Blue Zones Project. And um we see more and more gardens and love to see that. The master gardeners will be there. Um I'll be there. There'll be others. Horticulture, I think we said, is going to be there as well as our arborist, but it's a free event. They're doing everything from tours of the community gardens, the plats. I'm talking about the compost monarch butterflies, but the master gardeners will be there will be there. Uh July thirty-first from ten to one at Law Park. And it's free, but they're asking people to register just so they have an idea on numbers. But free event from ten until one on Thursday, July thirty-first.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to say uh after tonight's meeting, I just really appreciate the the comments that you and and council member Mensur made on on housing. And it's a topic I've been thinking about just a lot lately. Um I a hundred percent agree that diversifying our housing stock in this community or any community is really important. And ideally, that would mean obviously di- diversifying price point as well. Um in the past, we've talked a little bit about aging in place neighborhoods. And I really like how those are laid out, but in my mind, those should just be neighborhoods. Um I really do believe that diversification of housing is essential to building lively neighborhoods. And I think we need to be extremely cognizant of that going forward, especially as younger folks in Iowa keep finding reasons to leave. And I don't want to provide them another reason within our community twenty years down the road. Um larger cities at the turn of the century saw people priced out. The next tier of cities are seeing people be priced out today. Um and so I just wanna be cognizant of that. But I also agree with the things that Nick and council member Mensur were saying about just the look uh there we do have a lot of garages in the front of neighborhoods. I think that's something we're seeing across the country. Um so I just wanted to make those comments. I didn't think to make them earlier as I was just listening to the conversation and taking that in. Um but I just appreciate you guys bringing those design elements up.
Right, nothing for me. Steve. Okay, for my part, um last weekend I had my forty-year high school reunion. Um it was all based in Marion. Um it was just a very proud moment for me to have all my classmates come back uh from across the world. And um to see the change in our city and uh people were extremely positive about um how far Marion has come, what kind of community it is, the aesthetics, the attention, all the curb appeal of the community. Um it was just, it was a a a really a high point for me of my ten years in office to get to share that with all of these people who hadn't been back in a long time and and got to see the transformation of the community. Um sometimes we lose sight of of how far we have come uh because we're deep in it and we're working so hard that uh people that that come from the outside and see um always notice and point it out. Um so um good to hear that we are closing out five years later our derecho reimbursement uh pro- programs. Uh so congratulations. It's nice that we are finally getting that behind us and uh that was a very big event in our community and um a lot of a lot of challenges and a lot of work, but we came through it uh very well, I think, because because we are who we are as a community and it's as a as a team. And um that will always be something that I will be proud of is how we responded to that terrible event. Um and uh how you respond in times of crisis says it says a lot about who you are um as a as a community and as a team. It's easy to have success when things are going well, but uh it's it's in those times of crisis that leadership really matters and it shows and you know, uh we're coming up on five years here, five years, yeah, twenty twenty. Uh so um just want to recognize that and and can thank the team for for getting us uh through that event, getting our entire community through that event um and showing the world who we are as a community. Um in uh light of our oaths of office to the firefighters today, um I have I have this book that that uh late council member Paul Draper gave me, The History of Marion. Uh and he used to regularly share historical facts with us uh during this part of the meeting. Uh so I I might start doing that more often, but I I kinda looked at our first fire department. Um it was it it says that the uh well, eighteen seventy-four, it says that the Great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one, followed by Marion's own fire disaster in eighteen seventy-two sort of woke everyone up to the need for a fire department. Um and in the spring of eighteen seventy-four, the city council ordered two pieces of firefighting equipment from Chicago. They were the Babcock Chemical Fire Engine and a hook and ladder truck. Uh both of which were considered the acme of efficiency in those days. Bonds were issued on July tenth and and to the amount of eighteen hundred dollars in payment for these pieces of equipment. Soon after, they purchased the uh vacated Methodist Church. Uh and I'm sorry, the the vacated Baptist Church and paid twenty-five hundred dollars uh to have the first firehouse. So that's just a couple of facts about the the fire department, the long legacy of the department protecting uh Marionites and their property and their and their lives. Um so so very proud um for a hundred and fifty-one years. Um just a a little a word about the the discussion on on the housing variety and the and the lot uh lot sizes and all that, you know, uh it it is, it is something that we constantly need to be aware of, I think, because uh certainly, you know, we it's not about um the socioeconomic level of the housing. It's just about getting a variety at all socioeconomic levels. And um encouraging wider lot sizes creates the opportunity for more variety. Um to give more people options. And we often hear, well, that's what people are buying. That's what people are buying because that's the only option they were given. And they want to live in Marion and those are the options available to them, so they're buying those houses. We don't know that if they had another option, they wouldn't buy that. So uh we just have to consider that. And of course, we welcome developers and want them here doing work. We want the developer to 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 profit and to and to prosper here. Um we want them to do that also while thinking of the community. Um if one side wins at the expense of the other, it's not good. Um we can both win and and get and 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 uh prosper together where the community uh has we add value to the community in terms of what we're what we're offering and and the developer does well. And there's there's a balance there that we need to find. And I'm not saying it's not happening. I'm not saying that that's not happening in this case. I'm just, that's just something that I've talked about several times. Um that uh we just, you know, we want to work with developer. I, in my opinion, uh want to work with developers who have the community in mind and also bettering the community and giving us something that we can be really, really proud of. Um um just to to correct a couple of things that were said during the public comment uh on the bond referendum. The 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 aquatic center is has been driven by the community. I would, you know, I just want the public to know this. It started several years ago. The community was engaged in multiple ways. The community came up with these with with the plan. The community said this is what they wanted. I'm not saying every single person in the community, but the community, the people who were engaged and many people engaged themselves in the process uh came up with the with the plan. Um what the council is doing now is say is is we've put uh the 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 staff has put pricing to it and costs and then with the survey, we're going back to the community saying this is, this is what it costs. This is what you wanted. Are you willing to support this? If people don't want to support it, that's certainly their prerogative. We'll see what they say. But it's it's uh it is driven by the community and it's uh uh it will i- i- if a bond referendum happens, it'll be because we we saw support for it in the community. Um on some of the examples that were given, there are a number of cities that have water uh water park facilities across this across the state from Cedar Falls to Clive to Ankeny to Grimes. Um similar sized communities have similar types of aquatic centers. Uh the Cedar Rapids pools that were mentioned, uh those may still be in the same locations for those number of decades. They've all been redone as far as I I can recall. I know Ellis has, I know um uh Beaver Park has, I know uh uh Norwich have has. They've been rebuilt in the same location. So they're not existing for seventy or eighty years or whatever, whatever it was. Um so anyway, but the point was is that uh we will see what the community says and then we will and make uh uh sound decisions based on that. Um other than that, we just had the ribbon cutting for the elevator at the Masonic Lodge. Uh that uh building has existed since eighteen ninety-five. This elevator is gonna make it accessible for the community. They want to open up the space to the community for people to use that space. And it's really beautiful on the inside. It's a it's a historic building with lots of lots of wonderful architectural elements. Uh so I encourage everyone to see it. Um and um with that, I think that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you next time. Meeting's adjourned.